Okay, the time now is five oh four, we will start our budget from the shop.
Randy, are y'all ready?
Yep.
Which one do you want to talk first, once we get going? Do you want to talk? I think we need to separate the yellow buses from the activity bus in the conversation.
Okay, yeah, let's start with the activity.
Are y'all good with Randy going first and y'all answering questions and then how way she can go?
Yes.
Which one did you want to do?
Activity first.
Okay. So I'm gonna give you guys two handouts for that activity part. And I'll let her talk through there. A.
Okay.
A and B. A, Randy is the cheaper one, B is the bigger one.
Okay, I got you.
This is activity, right? Correct.
Oh, I may give you two As. Try me one of those.
Imagine if you put it at the bottom?
This is B?
The writing on it, yes sir, the one I wrote.
The writing was what?
B. Everybody should have one where on the bottom right hand corner says.
In need of him, Randy?
That's B.
Yes, sir, that is B. So Randy, what I would ask is you just kind of present and talk through it informally and then we can just let them ask questions about your expertise and what you think.
Okay.
I'm sorry, guys.
You're late.
You gotta stay later now.
What's up? Hi, old boy across.
Hello.
Hello, hello, hello.
I'm stopping to go.
It's so thirsty and I'm tired.
I love that we have a tea to go.
I didn't have time to go home and get my school life pass.
I would've asked y'all, but last time I asked, you're like, no, 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 so. Y'all could stay thirsty.
Well, I bought a gallon and put it in the fridge at work, so. I noticed that I'm not drinking all the.
How much is a gallon there?
Uh, I think it's.
So it's not outrageous?
Yeah, it's not bad. Gee, they're going down there all the time, so.
I'm very particular on my unsweetened tea. I want it to taste more like water than.
See, I don't like it real sweet, so I like their unsweetened.
Oh, thank you for this.
Okay, so we're talking about the activity first and Mr. Ritchie put a cross down at the bottom for the final price because the options were not included on that total price. So he added in those options at the very bottom. So the options were those additional monitors to put in there. And you know, when we looked at the bus, we saw the monitors in there and then the monitor back behind the driver, so that's included in there. And then the tables, theirs were eleven hundred dollars apiece. So we talked about having two tables in there, so that's in there. And then we did not put the window shades in there because rather than putting the window shades, they suggest the ceramic window coating because that lasts so much longer than the window shades. So the window, uh, ceramic window coating is four thousand dollars, so we didn't add the thirteen hundred in, we added the four thousand. And then Mr. Ritchie went ahead and added the twenty nine hundred dollars on the grill guard and then we put thirteen thousand dollars in there for a wrap. So that's where the final price comes in for, and that's the one that they brought that we all rode on. And that has the.
Without the bathroom.
Without the bathroom.
Without the bathroom, yes. So it would be, it would have more seating in it because we take out the restroom, wouldn't have a restroom in it, and then it would have the co-driver seat in it. So what they said on that larger bus was if we're going on longer trips, that it would be better to have the larger one to have that co-driver seat in there so that we could send two drivers on the trips. So that's why they suggested the DXL rather than the smaller one that we had talked about, that we had initially looked at, but they did not bring that one. So they suggested that because on longer trips it's much more comfortable for the kids and it's much better for the driver because you can send the co-driver along and they'll have a chair.
A lot more storage too.
A lot more storage underneath because it goes all the way underneath the bus. And like they showed us when they were here, it opens up and it goes all along and there's not like on our current activity buses where it has that division. And it has the lights and everything in there and it's easier to open and it's much better than some of the other cargos that you see on some of these other activity buses. Much easier to get to and you can store so much more underneath there. So that was the one that you guys are looking at, right there, and the final price was the four twenty five.
Ish, yeah. Like he's, he said thirteen thousand for a wrap that I.
Can we get away from the wrap?
I think we could do a very light wrap, that's what I told her. I think I would like something on it that says it's GT Lamisa, but some of the ones I see, I think the classier ones are the ones that don't have stuff going everywhere on them, so.
And they don't have it.
Like the signs on the go or like. If they can design a wet, I mean.
Like a more classier, less loud.
Less is more.
Yes, I agree, and I, and I think that thirteen thousand is probably big, whereas I think we could go smaller.
And that's their price, and I have purchased activity buses in the, in the past and just white, and then I've taken the signs on the road and done a great job for like seven and eight.
Yeah, that's, I've used them and I've used, I think, I don't know. I know the window shades. That's the only thing Shelley raved on, on theirs.
She does like them.
They, they work.
You know, the kids will tear them up.
They take the pre-K kindergarten to Abilene every year to the zoo. And in May, and she said that's a lifesaver.
Really?
I think she's talking about the one, because she said window shades, so I don't know if it's the tent or if it's.
Or the shades.
And we could do both, we can do the shade and the.
I wonder if they did do both.
They might have.
But this is what they got, I mean.
And she's liked it, right? I was gonna ask, I mean, that, yeah, okay.
Everybody that I know that has them, Andrews has them, Stanton has them, Big Spring has them, everybody just raved on them.
So how many is that, three? Two?
Andrews, Andrews has eight. Stanton has.
Two, I think.
Four.
Is it four?
Four.
Somebody has a boys and a girls, like it legitimately, it's one of those schools that says lady buffaloes and then buffaloes. And I don't know if that was them or not.
I know Andrews has several. I know when I looked at the ones at Stanton because we visited their site. And they have several.
Stanton's the one I got on at, they came to play tennis here, that's the first one I got on, I just wanted to go see it.
Yeah, and Big Spring has several and I've talked to their transportation director and they really like them, so. Everybody I've talked to really, really, really likes them. They, uh, they really like the way that their students are able to kind of move, you know, move about, not while they're moving, but you know, kind of spread out while they're getting on the buses and they have plenty of room and they like the way they ride, the drivers like the way they drive because the good thing about these is it's not like those big van pool or Prevos, so the drivers, it's like they're driving a school bus. And that's the way I felt the other day when I was driving it, it felt like you're just driving a school bus, so you don't have to have all of that extra training.
No more.
Yeah, so, and it doesn't, you know, it just feels so natural. You know, if you driven a bus, it just feels so great to you kind of wheel and the driver's gonna feel more comfortable. So I really think that it would be a good investment for us as a district. And I think that it would be good for our kids to be able to ride in something that, you know, they're comfortable in and they're safe in, so.
I just wanted you guys, I wanted to divide up activity in the yellow buses and just so y'all ask whatever questions you have.
Do we ever have, I mean, honestly, do we ever have a capacity for fifty seven or fifty two? With more options?
Well, the good thing.
Like that's the one or two, because it's a lower sitting profile one, right?
It's just like the one they brought.
Right.
So it sits just like a regular bus.
The DXL, it's a little taller, they talked about it being a little taller.
Just a little bit, yes, but not by much.
I was thinking of nothing, one or two and getting all options.
Everything.
And look at my seats.
I see. You know, I guess it just really depends on, you know, what you guys want. You know, the only reason I thought on the bigger one was because, you know, like he said, we might could put more than one team together. You know, because like the band, um, this year they're gonna have a hundred and twenty-five students that were taking everywhere. And they're gonna have two trucks, two trailers every time we go somewhere, plus two football, plus two cheer, I mean, plus one cheer. So you know, if you're talking a hundred and twenty-five and then sixteen cheer, we might could, you know, put the cheer with the band. You know, because now we're gonna have cheer in a separate bus, we're gonna have three buses for band, we're gonna have two buses for football. You know, if we had just a little bit bigger bus, we might could put the cheer on the band instead of them having a separate bus. You know, or a situation like that, you know, maybe we could put a couple of more activities.
I will be honest, that, that's never gonna happen. You're never gonna organize the cheerleaders with the band and the band would, I mean, I, I mean, it sounds good, but realistically, you're never gonna organize.
And is it gonna run at standard speed or is it gonna be?
It'll be as fast as a passenger car.
What did the, what was the storage difference in the big and the little?
Um, there was only, well, it was two or three more, uh, what did he say?
Is it listed on there, the storage?
I don't know if it's listed under there or not.
I mean, if you're looking, how many we looking at? If you're looking at two, I think money-wise, you're better to get the one or two. If you get two, but if you're only going with one a year.
My thought, and we're gonna look at yellow dogs too. My thought, because I've never even entertained either which way we went, I was thinking one this year and then maybe turn around in a year, seeing how we look and getting, I was looking at two yellow buses and one of these this year just because of how expensive they were. If we were to look at two, then we would need to revisit probably only one of the other, is my guess. So that we told to change the gang which way y'all want to go.
Yeah.
The what?
You gotta order a year out.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah.
What about money upfront?
Yeah, what is that, the money upfront?
He said there would be a deposit. But they, uh, he didn't say, on the yellow buses there was a deposit, but on these there was no deposit and then they did have the ten, they had up to a ten-year financing on that.
So the dollar amount on B, of course, it, it changed from what they had given us because y'all added the same thing that y'all added, is it, does that include it in A already too or?
No, because I just now did it right then, I can add it real quick.
Yeah, the options. Yeah, the options would be added into A also.
Am I looking at this right, so the total price of, in that left-hand column, like on A is three forty-eight, seven fifty.
Let me get the options on there real quick.
And then on B is three ninety-eight, seven twelve.
Right.
So we're basically looking at a difference of about fifty thousand.
Correct.
Between the two buses.
Right, basically, because you're gonna have the same option package. So you just have to.
Five more seats, and four.
Yeah, so a little bit more seats.
The storage is the question I have, I would like to know the difference.
Yeah, and I was looking at the storage because the bus is just a little bit longer, so there is just gonna be a little bit more storage, but there's probably not. I don't think there's a lot of difference on the storage.
It's on the pamphlet.
Well, it's very deep, it's deep and high.
There was at least twenty, thirty percent more storage on the, on the longer bus, if I remember the pamphlet.
What was it?
At least twenty to thirty percent more storage on the longer bus because of just the extra length and they have additional storage areas on there, so it was like twenty, thirty percent more.
Three, seven, nine, one, five, zero. On A, kinda right, three, seven, nine, one, five, zero. I went ahead and did add the window shades, which I don't have on the other one, so.
The one thing I worried about the long, the bigger bus, that I noticed on, on the pamphlet, it was talking about the height difference. I mean, they had, they probably had to, to add.
Correct.
So here's the storage.
Five fifty-six cubic feet.
To four forty-seven.
To four forty-seven.
So about twenty-five percent more storage space on the DXL.
How much?
About twenty-five percent more.
Twenty-five.
Here, I have, I put Ms. Coster's, all of mine, perhaps those back there now.
So it does have a little bit more height, it does have a little bit more length, so the can have a little bit more storage.
Where's the height? Because that's what, that, I was worried.
On the back.
Which ones do they have out at C raised on?
I don't know the height of, I don't know if it's one or two or.
For the other ones.
The majority of what Texas has been buying is the one or two. They're not buying the DXLs, they are buying the SE one or twos.
Who is?
The majority of Texas, yeah. The majority of Texas schools are buying the SE one or twos.
So on activity bus A, there wouldn't be that extra captain seat, I mean, the.
Correct, there would not be a co-driver.
But they could take a seat, right?
For sure.
Yeah, they can take a regular seat, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they just would not have that co-driver up at the front. We still have the tables.
Yeah.
Because you can add those to either one, so you'd still have those two tables. And then you would still have the cargo underneath, you just wouldn't have, like he said, you'd have twenty-five percent less. And then you wouldn't have as much on the end, it wouldn't be as long, so you'd have less seating. So those would be the differences, but you still have the tables in there, you still have the monitors, you'd still.
And then we still have, in the inside storage on the top, no?
No, not on the SE one or two, that's, that's, you have that, you have that extra cabin on the DXL.
That's where, that's where they.
It's open, that's what I mean.
Because you have that extra cabin.
The one that.
The positive on the DXL is the nine-liter diesel.
Correct.
To me, the positives are that and the storage, that storage will matter too, those are the ten positives.
Because of the motor.
Yeah, it's gonna have a bigger motor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. If you get two, two miles per gallon better.
So you're gonna get better.
Five dollars value.
Like Mr. Man said.
And which is that one?
That's always, I bought a new truck, it's, I gave four miles per gallon from my oh-nine to seventeen.
To me, it's worth the difference, fifty thousand dollar difference with that, with that diesel engine and with that extra storage for the kids.
And if all Texas is buying the, at one or twos, I think you might be able to get the DXL.
I'm thinking about that, maybe there's less, it's always going out.
Well, when I talk to him, it's about a nine-month build, so.
On either or?
Either or. But the DXL, um, they suggest those if you're traveling very far. But Texas, it doesn't matter.
We're far.
I mean, we're far, it doesn't matter.
Can we get put on a list if one becomes available to have options added before build?
I can ask.
I mean, I know, because some, some people get there like, oh, we don't need it.
And that is, he says on these, now that's the case with the yellow buses, but not the case with these others. He said they are in high demand.
So, but you've got to be approved by.
Yeah, I think that's what he said that day. If you've already kind of done your due diligence, go to who he calls first if he, if he has one of those.
I mean, I'd like, I'd, I'd almost like that because then we'd be a year ahead of the game rather than, okay, we gotta order, we gotta order two because we're a year out. Or six months, now we're ordering another one for a year out.
Yeah.
That's my biggest, I keep waiting a year out.
Well, you know, we have the five activities, one is on. We have, I have the, one that just, I can't run. It's just, it, it doesn't matter what I do with, do with it, how many times to put in the shop, how many times to try. It's not gonna work, it's not gonna happen. I told Mr. McBe, I just had to have one towed to the shop.
Which one?
Uh, number four. It's flashing some kind of weird transmission code at me. So two and five are the only two that are running right now, we've only got two on the road, so. And Coach Hood has adjusted his times to run the yellow buses. I mean, he's good with it.
Do you guys want to go through the yellow bus stuff and then kind of look at it as the big picture? Or once we kind of figure out which direction we want to go on all of it? And then come back and ask more?
I know one of those activity buses had a buzzer filter.
Do what now?
I said I know one of that two buses had a buzzer filter.
Uh, go through the.
So this package is a little more complicated. And I, I put them in the order, the top three are the ones that Ms. Bowler told me that if she could have ranked them, that's how she'd rank them, but I did include all the other quotes we got as well, so this is a lot of that.
I'm sorry.
I'm all about details.
I, I did.
Here go, y'all.
I'll give you mine.
I went to every. We like to kill trees. Well, and I went to every, you know, I went to Bluebird, I went to Blue Star, I went to Longhorn Bus Sales, I went to National Bus Sales, which has the coach liners. I went to, uh. I went to, uh, National Bus Sales, like I said, they're the ones that wrote the coach liner down, and then I also went to, uh, Thomasville, so I tried to get as, you know, as much of an eclectic, you know, diverse group as I could here so that we could kind of compare. So, um, the majority of what we have right now are Bluebirds, that's what we have as far as yellow buses are concerned. We do have one international that was a demo bus, which is kind of a, it's kind of a oddball bus that we have that was bought as a demo bus. Uh, that the manufacturer had been using it, or the salesman has been using it as a demo bus and we bought that one. So the majority of what we have are, are Bluebirds. On the top here, you see the Thomas, the Thomas built. And on the one that you have on the top, that's the, that's the number one that, um, I feel like has the most versatility that we're looking at. Some of these buses are very tight because of the new seat belts. So anything that, you know, purchased after twenty eighteen has to have the seat belt in there. And it cuts down the seating for the kids. And when you're talking about middle school, high school kids, some of them are pretty big. And when you try to get them inside a seat, they're sometimes sitting sideways because they just cannot get in there. And so this one is just a little bit, it has a little bit more legroom for the kids. And, um, it's a seventy-two passenger and it has this a little bit more legroom. When I was going through some of the other quotes, this one's more reasonable than some of the other ones. And it has more of the options that we would be looking at. So it does have the Cummins engine, it does have the Allison transmission. So the mechanics would be able to work on them because they're, they're used to working on both of those. And it does have our radios and our cameras already in there. Whereas, uh, some of the other ones don't have that in the package. So some of that pricing is already inside there, so you do see the price up there at the top for one forty-one nine plus the buyboard fee. And so, um, that one on the top is my number one choice. The, uh, the Thomas built, I like a safety liner, C twos. I feel like the drivers, you know, can drive those well, I feel like they fit in them well, I feel like the drivers, I mean, the kids fit in them well. Uh, they have a lot of good accessories on there. One of the good things about them are that the seat covers, uh, come off and you just wash them off. So you don't have to spray down the bus when you're cleaning the seats, you zip them off, you clean them off, you zip them back on. So that's a very great thing. So if we have a lot of seat damage, you just zip that seat off and you just zip another seat back on. So you don't have to try to patch, you don't have to try to glue, you don't have to try to, you know, melt the glue gun on there and try to fix. You just zip that seat off and you just zip that seat back on. So that's one of the great things about a safety liner. Some other good things about them are the mirror system setup. Whenever you turn your blinker on to the left or to the right inside on the interior mirrors, uh, the driver will see the outside of the bus. So when they turn their left blinker on in their interior mirror, they'll see the outside of their vehicle on each side. So that's a good safety feature that they've come up with. So there's some good safety features that they have to offer. So, um, on the number two customer quote, this one is a seventy-eight passenger. I don't think we need a seventy-eight passenger for routes, we just don't have our routes that, that full. They're a little bit harder to drive and so they're a little bit harder to get into taxi spaces. So, you know, this one wouldn't be the number one choice just because.
With it being seventy-eight passenger, does it shrink the seats down like you were talking for the bigger kids because they're?
It does, yeah. And they're, you know, they're gonna be a little bit, you know, tighter to turn. Now, if we're gonna be able to get more students on there, but, you know, at what price? And then the third one that you see there, um, the seats are a little tight and they're not made for the bigger kids. So they're made for littles, but they're not made for bigs, so. And they're not as good for field trips. So this number, number one here, it's a little more flexible for field trips and routes, so we could use it both. It wouldn't be just for the route or just for a field trip, it would be more versatile. So that's kind of what we're looking at on the Thomas built. So, um, any question on the Thomas built or the C twos with safety liners that we're talking about there?
I like number one.
Yeah.
You're only looking at the difference between one and three.
Right, and there's not a big difference there. I mean, it's just a little bit fresh.
But just to have that more, maybe it's not for the kids.
You just don't realize how much until they actually all get on there.
Yeah.
You know, especially when those high school kids get on and you're like, whoa. They are big, yeah, they really are. And then when they try to get on those seats, those middle school, high school kids usually need one seat to themselves, they really do. So, and even when I try to get into a seatbelt, you know, it's like, you know, you're struggling to get in there, so. Yeah, I think these are, this one's just a little more versatile for what we need for our kids.
Do they have diesel engines also?
Yes, they, all the ones from, um, the only gasoline engine that I have is from Bluebird, from Blue Star. That's the only gasoline, um, engine that I got a quote on.
How, how come the Bluebirds are so much more than the rest?
I, I've looked at all of these quotes and I think one reason, um, is because one of them is a gasoline. I think that's one reason. But I think their prices have just, I mean, you know, because when I talked to the salesman, he said, you know, and I did, I purchased Bluebirds in twenty, twenty nineteen, I purchased Bluebirds and they were not this high. I mean, and he said everything.
Because they're substantially higher than the rest of them.
They are extremely high, they really are. Of course, everything is in here too, just like with the, with the, with the Thomas built. You've got your radios and your cameras and everything is inside of here. So there would be no additional cost for us. But they are, they're, now, the gasoline engine is in the Blue Star price. The thing about the gasoline is gonna save us on, on mileage, but they're not gonna keep up with the diesel out on field trips. They would be really good for routes, gasoline engine would be really good for routes, but you send a diesel bus with a gasoline engine and the diesel's gonna outrun that, that gasoline even on a field trip. Now, routes, it's gonna be great, especially for, you know, gas mileage, but.
Which engine's gonna last longer though, isn't a diesel engine gonna last longer?
A diesel engine is gonna last longer, yes. Well, I mean, and the thing about the gasoline engine, and this is what I told the salesman too, there's just not a lot out there on them. So I kind of want some of these other districts to run these gasoline engines for a little while before I make my decision. So I want to talk to some of these districts that are running these gasoline engines because they have, um, I think it's a little district outside of Abilene. The Tyne?
Tyne is right outside of Abilene.
Yeah, and I think they're running all, I think they're running all gasoline, and he said they love them, they, they really like them. But, um, maybe it's another one, I don't know, but he said that there's, there is a district up there, they're running all gasoline. But, you know, I said, well, let's, uh, let them do all experimenting and then I'm ready, so.
It's kind of like the electric bus, like I've seen those electric buses and I don't think we're ready for them in West Texas, but I'm curious, these schools that are getting on them, how, how that's gonna work.
You know, and, and me and Mr. McBe have talked about EVV, you know, because there is some incentives out there for getting EVV buses. The problem with it is, is where's the infrastructure? And that's one of our questions.
And it's not in West Texas.
It's not.
I can assure you of that.
It's not, and you know, we could run them on routes, very short in-town routes. But we're not gonna be able to take them on country routes and we're not gonna be able to take them on field trips because where do you stop and, you know, charge? And so that was one of our questions, and so sometime in September, Robert Haney is coming to meet with us, you know, and talk to us about some EVV, but that's some of the questions we have, you know, where's the infrastructure? So, because you get credit and you can get some free buses, but then you have to trade in a couple of your buses. We're okay with that too, right, though, Mr. McBe? There's a couple of them we could trade in. So we do have a couple of short.
Say that again?
I don't want to keep a, a boneyard, a junk.
No, and this is what, the real basis of everything here is we've got to start so we can start kind of rotating our fleets in and out because, uh, we haven't bought a travel bus in over a decade. I think it was two thousand and eleven. And then we, the last yellow dog was before COVID, two thousand and eighteen or nineteen, and that's our fault, right? And we've got to fix it and so that we can get on a rotation so we're never in this situation again, you know, down the road.
Some buses will give you ten years at least.
I think, I think an activity bus is gonna give you ten years, yeah, especially these, I, I think they're made different.
Yeah, I mean, ten, twelve, we should be, you know, and, and we've been very fortunate and been able to run the ones that we have for the years that we have, I mean, I, I feel like the ones that have been very good to us, I mean, I really do.
Yeah, we really can't get mad at the buses for breaking down in two thousand twenty-three.
We can't.
When we bought them in two thousand eleven.
We can't. I mean, you know, it's like, you know, what's happening is, is normal because we, I mean, they're giving us all they've got. So, okay, so any question on the, uh, Bluebirds? Cause, you know, like I said, they are pretty pricey. But, you know, what we have are Bluebirds and they, Mike said, given us some good years. So we know from experience that they run well. Okay, um, so on the national bus sales, those are the ones that, um, he brought the activity bus and he also had some yellow buses. Now, some of these prices, one of them is used and so I don't think we even wanna discuss the used buses. But there is a, um, there is a couple of new ones in here. So there's a twenty twenty-four IC International that's a seventy-two passenger yellow school bus.
Third, third page in the national bus sales.
Yeah, that's the third page. And the one on that one says estimated build time is October to November of twenty twenty-three. And I, I looked at that and I thought, how can? Yeah, how can national bus sales have a build in October and November of this year when it takes a year for everybody else? So I, I wouldn't count on that one because I just don't see how.
Somebody may have ordered it and backed out.
That's true. It may be already in the build, so that could be true. But that one is available at one thirty-five. And that one's a twenty twenty-four international seventy-two passenger yellow bus. And they're saying that it could be ready October, November. And Mike did say that when he was here.
Next month almost.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we could probably call and ask this.
Yeah, and, and the man that I've been working with it, which is Gary Guest, he, uh, is on vacation until the twenty-sixth. So, but he should be back on Monday, so I can sure ask that.
So that would charge us eleven hundred dollars to deliver from Tulsa, Oklahoma?
Yeah. I have people that would be willing to go get it, let me tell you.
I'm ready.
You're ready, no? Um, and then that last page is another twenty twenty-four, but that's a transit. Um, and it's a seventy-six passenger, um, which all the drivers can drive the transits because they drive the, the yellow, I mean, the activity buses. But it's on the ground and available now. So they've already got it there and it's, it's a brand new one. So, but that one's one sixty-four, so. That one's a little more.
Can we get pigs and all that just to look at them or?
Do, I'm sorry.
Can, can you look at them to?
Yeah, he can send us whatever we want.
So that's, that's a flat nose like our activities.
Average activities, but it's a yellow bus.
Oh, okay.
So it's a seventy-two passenger, so it's flat nose, but it's, uh, and I'm not sure if it's a, it doesn't say if it's got the, oh, okay, it's a, it, it is a pusher, so it's got a rear engine. So it doesn't have an engine in the front. So it does have an engine in the back. I don't like the engines in the front because they've got a doghouse and they're very hard for the driver to get over, you know, get to the seat. But the rear engine's a lot better.
On a flat nose?
On a flat nose, yes. Yeah, those, those flat noses with the engine in the, in the front, man, they've got a doghouse and they're just, they're very bulky, hard to get to the seat and they're just, but the engine in the back, fine.
Would this twenty twenty-four International solve up, I mean, over October, November, if it solved this year?
It would.
I mean, it's not, it's not a, what you call it, a Bluebird, but it.
No, but it's an International. I mean, and I, you know, and I've, I have, I've purchased Bluebirds, I've purchased Internationals and I've purchased, uh, the Thomas built. I mean, I've, I've, I've purchased all, all types of buses, so.
Did you ever have problems with the National, the International?
No. International's a very good bus. Actually, an International is a, a very tough built bus. And, um, it, it, they run, you can find parts for them, you can get them fixed locally at Lubbock, Midland.
Like, earlier, you were talking about the Thomas built and how the seats were bigger for our kids, like the seventy-two passenger on an International, what?
It's about like a Bluebird, so we're, it's gonna have about the, a little tighter.
But not too tight.
Not too tight, no.
And those, do those need seatbelt?
But they do.
Yeah.
They all have seatbelts. I mean, so it'd be more than the one thirty-five, right?
No, it's in there. Yeah, okay.
Well, you just said available options, so I just thought that meant you'd have to add it.
Oh, well, it says three-point seat belts installed. Available options. Oh, well, you're right. It doesn't have. No, three, okay. See, so, so what it is, if, if you don't want the seat belts, it's a board opt-out. And I, I think you would have a community outrage if you don't put the seat belts.
I don't wanna buy a bus without seat belts.
We do not. So we would have to install the seat belts, yes, so that's an extra cost.
So it'd be twenty thousand. Which would be a new bus, one forty-two?
Yeah.
I don't know. If we're looking at two Yellow Dogs, I may solve one of them and then order one. And then one activity. I mean, I don't know how y'all.
Well.
Yeah, cause I'm not gonna lie, this whole time I was thinking we would get two of the same Yellow Buses, but I'm kinda like y'all. I mean, I think we need to see if these are legitimately could be available.
Now, there is one more page.
You know?
I don't know. Do y'all see the one page that has just the?
It was the last one I handed you separate of everything else.
And that's an International from Longhorn. Uh-huh, and you can tell that one is a very good price. And that one's one twenty-four. Um, but it's not gonna have our cameras, our Angel Trax cameras or our radios on there, so we would have to install that after we get them. Or they'll install the cameras for us and then we'll have to pay for them, but that would be an extra charge.
What would be the timeframe as far as to get that?
A year.
A year.
One year out.
It's weird how that one brand could get them quick and everybody else.
Well, and, and, and Mr. Man said maybe it's because that one was already in builds.
You're probably right.
This was an order and somebody had already figured that out. Shouldn't we find that out?
Yes, and, uh, Gary will be back on Monday and I can sure ask him all those questions.
And is that price sitting stone or can we, can we work it?
He says here that we can, you know, it depends on what we're doing, but he's always willing to talk to us about anything.
Well, and, I mean, if they have two of those that we don't know about, maybe if we were buying two, we could talk that price down.
I mean, and if you're talking about buying two and an activity or a coach liner?
Well, that was the, our, my thought process going in and you haven't had a chance to talk about the numbers. But I, I, in my head was thinking we would try to go two yellow and one activity and then cycle back a year or two and go another activity. But I also was thinking two buses that we wouldn't get until later. I mean, I think we do check and see if, if those dudes are available.
And I think as a board, we need to look at that option of if one of these coach liners comes available like, like this.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, they don't last. I think as a board, we, we put it at their trust.
That's what he said, Ron.
Snag it.
That's what he said, that, that's exactly what he, he said if the board has already approved it, then that's who, that, that's exactly, I forgot about that.
Okay, yeah.
If one, if one was to come free, somebody that's already said we're good to go, that, that is what we see.
I did say that last time. So I would be for that. I trust y'all.
I forgot about that.
If we can get it at four miles rather than nine to ten, we just, we got buses going down.
And it's like Mr. Ritchie said, we can't be mad at these buses because we.
And that's nobody's fault. I mean, because.
No.
No facilities.
Yeah.
No facilities.
It is what it is. Now we fix it and move on.
You know, it, it happens. You know, before you can know it, that's.
Do we need trading on?
Well, if we can, we, I mean, we'll, we try to trade an old one. You don't get much for old Yellow Dogs.
You don't, but he said that he would look at what we have and he would give us some process on trades.
And that's my ultimate goal is whatever we do now to, to get, to get the activity, I'm counting the activity buses almost kind of separately than our Yellow Dogs. Start to get a rotation where we never, ever have to buy two again. We buy one and we slowly phase out the older ones and trade those in and just.
Well, I think we talked about it a while back that we were gonna go on a rotation and I guess we wouldn't do it that soon. So what are we doing trading? Can we do an auction?
We can do an auction too. Yeah, I, I, I mean, the way that we do the auction, you know, we do it online. And so you just put the pictures out there and people just come pick them up once they put a price, price on them. So, and, you know, people do a lot of schoolies, so, you know, those buses will sell. Cause people use them for RVs and people use them for food trucks.
That would almost be bonus. I mean, we just try to figure out which route would get us the most money for our buck, you know?
So you've been in the business long enough, so what would be, what's worked out in the past for you, auctioning off or trading off or?
Trade usually.
Trade.
Usually get a little bit more for trade.
I've looked at some auctions. I think Snyder did one earlier this year and one of their buses went for like less than twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, and that's about.
That could show stuff on a trade that you fifteen.
And if we were gonna trade it in or sell it that cheap, like I know, like the Boys and Girls Club needs a bus, I'd offer it to them for that price before. If, if that's the price, you know, before we, we just.
Well, South Plains College has been looking for a bus also because they're doing that school bus driver training. And they've been looking for a bus so that they can train drivers.
But you could just shop the different options, you know, and figure out which one gets us the most money.
And I've had auctions and I mean, like, they'll, they'll surprise me, like one bus went for, you know, forty-five hundred dollars. And I didn't think it was worth three hundred dollars, you know, so this really depends. And so, and like you said, about twenty-five hundred to three thousand is about the going rate. So, um, and then there's one last page in there and I don't know if you guys see it or not, but it says Daimler Truck Financial.
Think it would be the last page in the very first column.
That one goes with the Thomas built. And that one is just a page on, um, if you, you know, were talking about financing. It just talks about the different terms. And so that one goes with the Thomas built. So.
Thomas built was the first, the first three ones you showed.
So he just sent me that, um, and he just based that on three buses. If you were, you know, if we were to purchase three, that's just, you know, the amount financed for three would be four hundred and twenty-six thousand. So you've got four different options there. Um, so that one goes with the Thomas built. And that would be on the.
Which that's just a number they threw at us. We at no point were planning on buying three buses. That's just what they used as an example.
He was just kinda, you know, spitballing on.
With his Nationals, you can, you can finance up to ten years, right?
Correct.
The coach liner.
Uh-huh. Yeah, he said he did three, five and ten, up to ten.
I think we'd be foolish not to at least call this National guy when he comes back on the twenty-sixth and see what's sitting there and how much what is sitting in there costs.
Yeah, I can ask him what's there.
He has one coming out in October and one, or just say, look, we're, we're buying two, two of these and one of these.
What can he do?
We either order or whatever, you know, comes, that meets our specs. We don't want something that don't meet what, what you need.
Yeah, I felt really bad calling him yesterday, but he said, when I get back to the campground, I'm like, oops.
I guarantee him.
He said, I've worked every day this week.
He better take a cell, what did he get?
He said, I've worked every day this week. It's no problem. Cause he is, I, you know, we've been talking on the phone, but he didn't have me anything in paper, so.
Right.
Bus questions, either activity or, you didn't get to ask any activity bus questions, Mr. Haiti. You may want to before she leaves and finishes up.
Well, I'm good.
Then you guys can always call me or run that off this evening if you think of anything. Text me.
Thank you for all the research. Appreciate you.
Sure, I want some new buses. I'm gonna, I'm gonna research. Don't ask me twice. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. McBea, you got up at the start and I stole your thunder and let Randy go first.
All right, so, uh, I'm gonna do this like I always, I'm always looking for things and reviewing the numbers. I'm gonna present it in the same fashion. And I wanna start, you have your sheets? Uh, I wanna start on the third page. It has the net balance on the bottom of the page.
Hold on, give me a second.
Yeah, hold up what you're looking at, cause they have a whole lot of stuff in front of them because of me.
You're good.
Third page is this, I think, is what it's talking about.
So we're gonna start at the last, the last page, down at the bottom where it says net balance. And the, uh, what you see in the first column is the net balance, it's two million four hundred fifty-nine thousand. That's where we are as of today through our financials. That's our net, uh, decrease in, in the fund balance. And that's gonna hold pretty close. It's, uh, we've only got a couple of days left that we have to worry about. The next column is the, uh, this year's budget. The, the next column is this year's, this year's budget, and that's got the three point two million dollars. And of course, that red means that it's in the negative and that, that's what we anticipated. So the difference, uh, between the two is seven hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. That's, that's a, that's a bonus. That's, uh, fund balance money that we're not gonna, we're not gonna spend. We, we said we were on our original budget, but we're gonna be seven hundred ninety-three thousand dollars ahead of the game. But, and, and these numbers are gonna hold pretty good, so we'll be set that much ahead of the game.
Seven hundred eighty-three or something?
Seven million.
Seven hundred, seven hundred and eighty-three, seven hundred ninety-three, nine hundred and three dollars.
So where does that money go if we're not using it?
It's a, it's a return to fund balance.
Fund balance.
So it stays with us, yes.
It stays with us. That difference of, of that amount stays with us. And what I thought was interesting is if you look to the far right and you see the six hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in red, bottom, on the bottom right. That's our proposed, uh, net reduction of fund balance. So we, if we compare that to what we are, we anticipate saving for the year, for this past year, we'll be, we'll still be ahead in fund balance at the end of next year. The other, the other consideration, I wasn't sure about mentioning this because we haven't got to the end of the month. But, uh, I'll put a bug in here. Remember, we have unencumbered, uh, uh, numbers that we'll be looking at that will also add back to the fund balance. But I, I'm gonna, I don't know what that's gonna be, so I'll announce it at the next board meeting when we, uh, when we get to the next board meeting. So I wanted to work up from here, uh, and just mention a few things. Stop me if you have questions. And if I get to the end and I haven't touched on something that you wanna hear about, just let me know and, and I'll do my best. As you move up, you see, the first line you see, heading is of course above the total, is the property appraisal cost. If you look to the far right, it's budgeted a hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars. That's what they're gonna charge us next year. This past year was, was about a hundred and seventy-three dollars, late going up, twenty-three thousand dollars. Am I gonna go over all these items?
Kinda just talk them through, just go call, just tell them what A, B, C, D. Cause that, once you tell them that, it's easy for them to just skim through and read it all. A is what?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just go through and tell them what, what means what.
So the first column, the very first column is year-to-date actual numbers. I use those to compare to the second column and the third column. The second column is the current budget, current revised budget. The third column is the difference between the revised budget and the, uh, proposed budget, the one to the far right. And that, of course, the last column is what we're proposing as our budget. And then again, it's that six hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred, uh, fifty-one dollars. There's a.
Does that make sense?
Okay, all right, so, uh, when, when you, when you look up and down there, you see some of the things like the one up, you see, uh, facilities, acquisition and construction. So we get up, we get, uh, very little, we did a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars in that last year and I budgeted a hundred thirteen thousand dollars for this year. And that's just in case, we, we may or may not spend that money. Net service, uh, of course, uh, is mandatory for us. The next column that I would like to talk about is, let's go to, let's go to the next page. It starts with the, with the guidance and counseling service. The, the only real area to look at here is, what's heading now, it says student, public transportation. And you can see in the far right in green. And you can see in the far right in green, if you count down five items, you see an amount of seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars. That's an allowance for a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar activity bus and two buses at a hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars each.
And really, the important thing to note on what he just said then is that that deficit of budget of six what, six thirty-six, what is it?
Oh, yeah, six hundred thirty-six.
That includes him putting in these buses, which changes the whole thought process, in my opinion, yeah.
That includes two yellow dogs and one.
Two yellow dogs and a hundred and forty-two.
Activity, yes, so that, that to me, big picture was important to, to know, yeah.
The next item that is, is referenced is the, on the next page, I'm sorry, it's the bottom, plant maintenance and operations. Countdown one, two, three, four, you'll see an amount of six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. That includes our insurance, do you see it? At the very top it says. Guidance and counseling is at the top, very top in black and left, but we're gonna go all the way down to plant maintenance, plant maintenance and operations. And there's one, four down, you'll see six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in there. That's where we, that's where we carry our insurance, and you know, when we had Chris out here, we had a, we talked about that large amount that's part of that, so we're covering all our insurance costs in that particular item. And then on the first page, if you look down to the heading that's called transfers, you'll see two million eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. That's been a big help for us, that's the money that was transferred over for the bond, not for the bond, but for the construction on, on the facilities. And that'll go away, so it's really helped our budgets quite a bit, so from last year to this year, against our revenue. The revenue has not changed since we started doing the calculation, even with the tax, tax calculation and the, so it's, it's maintained, we've maintained the same revenue since our first proposal for the, for the budget, the only thing that's changed is the bucket. Instead of being property taxes, it's now state funded. And really, we can talk about some of the items, but most of these items have held consistent from the very first time that we talked about those. So I'm open for questions on that, but I think we're, I think we're at a very good, very good place, and I think this is a, a good number, especially considering what, what we're gonna be doing at the end of this year to help offset some of those, or offset that next year's six hundred, six hundred something thousand dollars.
And, and before you ask questions, I do wanna point out, first off, Ron did a really good job on this, but we run this through some other people, which I don't know, I don't know if that has been normal practice or not, but we've had service, two different service center eyes on this, and that's why I feel pretty good about it, because it was first scary to me that we were able to come in so much lower than what it was a year ago. But, I mean, he's, he does a good job, but we've also had some other people that we trust greatly looking at it, so I'm, I'm just very pleased. So good job is the point.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the biggest issue, and this year's budget, the biggest difference is that, that construction money that came out of the fund balance that went into, to the new construction that we did, so, and that's going away, that's two million dollars, so, so that's really, really a, a good for us, just good for this year, this year. We don't have to set aside money for any new real construction, so we're, we're at a really good, we're at a good place, it's maintenance and operations, so.
That's, that's the thing that I was looking at, the point that I wanna make, for those of us that were here at this time last year, you know, all we heard was we have twenty-two million in fund balance, we have twenty-two million in fund balance, and that was never the case. As was proven by the audit figures that came out in January twenty-three, that we were actually at eighteen point eight million, not twenty-two million. But, but then to take that, you know, if you take that eighteen million, and, you know, we were told from the get-go that we were looking at a three point four, three point, three point three to three point four deficit. We were even told that by Dahlia before she left, and now we're looking at a two point four, two point four, five million dollar. That, that to me, tells me that something was not right from the standpoint of us being told there was that three point, cuz it just doesn't add up to go, and you, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't add up to go from being told it takes two point two million per month to operate the district, where now we're finding out it's, no, it's really only one point five million. And so my, I guess, you know, I guess my point is, the picture was painted a little more bleak to us, in my opinion, back in August, September of last year, in where we're really at right now. And so even though that six hundred thirty-six thousand dollar deficit might open our eyes a little bit, it's really not that bad, because if you, if you look at what we were operating at before and where we're at now, we've gone in the right direction, and, I mean, you know, to me, if you, if you take our audited fund balance of eighteen point eight at August thirty-first of last year, and let's say we finished in, in a two point five, you know, million dollar hole this year, which is what you're kinda projecting, then, I can't get my phone to work. And then we factor in that, you know, that six hundred thirty-six thousand dollar deficit, we're still gonna be setting over sixteen million in fund balance, and that's, you know.
It's healthy.
That's, that's healthy.
I don't know that we wanna.
I don't.
Right, we wanna be careful with it, but it is still healthy.
I'm, I just.
Compared to a lot of districts.
Well, at least we'll know where the money is going and it's where.
Yeah.
I just think that, I mean, you know, yeah, we're looking at, you know, these, these buses are not cheap and, and just the budget itself, we're still gonna be in good shape, you know, by adopting what, you know, what y'all are presenting here as far as these big purchases, because I just don't, I guess I'm having, I'm having trouble understanding, why are we being told, you know, that we're gonna be looking at the three point three, three point four million dollar deficit whenever, because, you know, I know, I know y'all are good.
We ain't that good.
We're saving money, but you're talking.
Well, and this is what, we had this conversation earlier, because I'm, I'm always worried and thinking, but the best answer that he and I came up with is we really don't know the why, we just know how we have done business, and however we're doing business is working in our favor, you know, that's what I would say to it.
It's a culture, it's a culture, and, and, and we're gonna do things, you know, these are consequences. We can't explain what happened in the past, but what we do know is, is as a culture, we're gonna operate a particular way, we're gonna do business a particular way, Richie does a great job of calling people in here and cutting electricity bills, we're doing things for the bus department. I mean.
You're being conservative, that's what.
It's the small.
I'm cheap, Ms. Gonzalez.
Sometimes it's the small things, because that will add up and we'll see that difference in the.
We appreciate what y'all are doing.
I guess, yeah, and I guess that's the point I'm trying, I mean, I'm kinda along with it, but that's kinda the point I'm trying to make here, is what y'all are doing is working, and the direction you're going is working, and I appreciate that, because, you know, the, the way you're going about things and the way, you know, you and I have talked about the budget process and the way you look at things, that's, I mean, I can only speak for one or two.
Are we done with that study already, with that electrical study?
No, sir, it'll be ongoing, yes, sir.
So we're basically looking, like last year, eighteen point eight million was our fund balance quarter odd, as of August thirty-first of this week.
Yes, sir.
So when our audit rolls back around and we'll get it in the spring, whatever, right now, we're looking at about sixteen point three or four.
In that range, yes, sir.
Cuz you minus the two.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's an easy entry, I mean, okay.
And what I have.
It wasn't back then?
No, that's what I'm like, I can do that math when you say, it's easy, I don't do it.
What I believe is this, and I think I, I think I said it before I took the seat when I was interviewing with you guys, is I think we need to come up with a number that we all feel good about, and just say, that, that threshold in our fund balance, we will never go below. Right, you know, and whatever we need to do around that.
Fifteen million is pretty nice.
Exact, that's exactly what I.
I don't think fifteen, but it makes me feel. Size of school, the level Cooper is.
They have a huge deficit.
Six million dollar deficit, and they've only got fund balance of about twenty-three million right now, and, and we're sitting here with eighteen point seven million, you know, so, I mean.
Deficit budgets this year are gonna be more normal than they've been because of the inflation in the legislature. But I also learned in all my, all of our callings, we're healthier than most with our firm numbers, we are much healthier than a lot of schools.
I feel more confident knowing that six thirty-six includes the yellow dog and activity bus.
To me, that changes the whole game.
That's easily seven hundred thousand, so, if, if we can correct the three point four million deficit last year to two point four five, I think, I think we can cover the six thirty-six. But don't you think going forward, though, I mean, with, you know, I, I realize four hundred thousand for an activity bus or a hundred and forty thousand a piece for a yellow dog bus, but the difference it's gonna make come repair bill time. You know, you look at function thirty-four right now, and where it's at, you know.
It's pretty, I feel like I've sent y'all a text once a week that somebody's broke down.
Tow bills, cuz tow bills I know are a minimum of fifteen, seven hundred to get a minimum.
We've talked about, we've talked about that, the money they were gonna save.
Five thousand last time.
Yes, sir.
You'll reconvene.
And that's cheap, don't you think?
Oh, yes.
That's why I figured jumping on this one, that's gonna be ready in October, you could probably save thirty-five, forty thousand.
Immediately.
Immediately.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I know it's. The quicker we can get a new bus and get one of those ones that break down, the more you'll start seeing the savings.
And, and we, we feel comfortable about our six hundred thirty-six thousand dollars because we feel like the attitude that we take about making projections, if, if we need to be a little higher in expenses and a little lower in projecting revenues, we, I do that, we do that, we talk about it and we do things that way, because we would be, it's a lot easier to tell you, oh, shoot, we, we didn't spend enough of our budget. Oh, heck, we didn't, we didn't hit our number for our income because we got more, and that's, that's how we wanna approach this. We want things to, to, if, if we can predict this well and feel comfortable about the cushion, I feel like we can become, we can get ahead of that six thirty-six, if things go good, we wanna bring it in at that number, or better, not worse. The only thing that would change that number are circumstances, to be under our control.
We have no idea what happened today.
Yeah, and we don't know, and, and those are things that we will talk through as we go through the year. It'll be clear and understandable if we understand why that number changes, whether it goes up or down. And, and so, and that's the way we plan, that's part of the culture that we expect to do here at La Mesa, that's, that's the way we wanna, that's the way we wanna do business, so. So anyway, that's just, that's the way we think about it, and that's the way we put the numbers together, that's how I look at it. I'm always gonna try my best to be prudent in what I say, and make sure I see everything and make up, make sure it's clear that what I'm putting down is, is again, been checked by those that have been doing it for years. Dr. Carr is an expert, known as an expert in the state of Texas for his knowledge, as somebody that sees it from high up, you know, the big picture. Mrs. Gearing from Region Fifteen, she's hands-on, she's, she does training, a lot of training, and she takes all, all my calls, and, and she, and I send her something and she details it for me, so does Dr. Carvin, she details it, she goes in and says, I've looked at it, this looks good, this doesn't look good, why are you doing this, she quizzes me on, on all that, so I'm real, real comfortable with the numbers. Now, that doesn't mean that they're not, they are, they are a target number, because we still don't know what our population's gonna do and what our needs are gonna be and what's gonna change through some of our allotments or our special needs students, so all of that changes, along with attendance, all those are factored in, but we do a good job of making sure that we know we have to factor those numbers in, and then when the time comes, if we need to change these numbers because something is, if something happens through student enrollment or whatever it might be, we'll be prepared to let you know and say, we're either gonna change the budget.
And if something was to change student enrollment, it would be for the better, not for the worse, so we ain't gonna lose kids.
Or legislative.
Yeah, October could change some things, yes, sir.
We're hoping that might, I mean, that could, that could do a ten dollar more student, that would solve that six thirty-six.
Yes, sir.
Easy, I mean, five, ten dollars more data per student.
That would be huge.
I mean, we don't make that big, but that would, that would cover that six thirty-six.
So we hope you feel comfortable with what we're doing, and we hope that you trust to take care, we'll take care of these numbers, and, and we put a lot of, a lot of work into it, so that, that's, that's what we.
I appreciate you.
While more concerned, I do know, I do feel very comfortable about the numbers, but I'm as much concerned about how you receive it and how you feel about it, because we do wanna develop trust with, with you guys so that we can be, so we can have the hard, the hard conversations, when we, when we need to have the hard conversations, so.
Now, it's not that we're told it's not our business. We can't give you that number.
I'm just glad we reached in the.
All the time, yes, sir. We've mended that relationship.
Do they charge, like all schools, in case we need to use them, or do they charge certain?
There's a, every year.
We've been paying them, we just never use them.
We renewed these certain contracts and then they provide those services, yes, sir.
Well, I'm glad you, I'm glad you used them.
We all are, this whole building has started to use, they've been here a lot, they've been happy to be here, they wanna help.
Thank you very much.
Unless we have questions, we can adjourn this and. Take a rest.
Now it's six eleven, we're down to.
Hold on, who's, who's our budget first?
This meeting of the trustees of the La Mesa Department School District is now in order, it is six thirty-one PM on August the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. A forum is present with all board members present, this meeting has been duly sought, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five, five one, Mr. Ritchie, would you please lead us in prayer?
Absolutely, you bow with me. Dear Lord, just thank you for, just thank you for allowing us to be here to represent what all we represent. Just bless us and, and guide us with the responsibility that you've given the people in this room to, to take care of the young people of this community and to provide for the young people of this community and to just push La Mesa ISD and the students and the staff and everybody involved further and further into your path and into your light, thank you for everything you do for us, and we love you, amen.
Do we have anybody praying? We'll do the public hearing concerning twenty twenty-three, twenty-two budget, tax rate.
Get that podium back out, someone come talk tax rate, I'll get the podium back out. It's past his bed, it's.
Look at him, Richie.
I mean, no, but I love him.
Already have stories.
Don't let him talk to you. You're older than him.
And he wonders why he got sent on a wild goose chase.
Kevin noticed my smile when he, you went to the wrong restaurant, Richie.
Yeah, he tells me to meet him at Lost Texan, so I met him at Lost Texan, and I'm on the phone in Lost Texan, Ron, you're not at, he goes, no, just turn left. And the wall's to the left, and all of a sudden I heard, oh, Texas Cajun, he's like, ah.
Sorry. Sorry.
Sorry, go on.
All right, the, the ordinance that we have to set the tax rate, we're going from, are we going to a tax rate of point eight two six three zero and a minus tax rate of point three seven seven five six for the two, for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Last year, we had a, a tax rate that was a bit, a little bit higher than this. This tax rate is-
Sixteen cents low.
Sixteen, sixteen cents less than it was last year. So it's, the tax rate has gone down. The cause of that is primarily because of the homestead and also the state's picking up additional money. Instead of locally, it's coming from the federal, from the state government. So anyway, that's, that's, that's our proposed rate. We just need to take action on it.
Do y'all have questions?
Anybody have a question?
Richie, did you want to say a little something about that?
No, I just, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that it is said that it is a sixteen cent cut, cause that's a big deal, I think. That's a big, that's not a small cut. So I'm happy with it. But it is still what we need to, to function properly here in La Mesa.
Yeah, it still suits our, it still suits our needs only because of the state government picking up the difference. I think there's an ordinance to, to sign?
She'll get to that. Do y'all have any questions?
Any other questions?
Cool. You're good.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. There being no further business to come before the-
Oh, we gotta do, we gotta approve the budget. We did the tax rate. No, yeah, we, we did the tax rate. We just got-
So I would like to propose that we adopt the budget that's presented in the workshop. Also attached here as an item, so.
Can I add one thing before you make that motion? One thing we didn't talk about in the budget workshop is, because I do know that it's been something that we've talked about. We are raising the per diem for our students. I kinda have a vague idea in my head, but things have gotten a little bit more expensive for our people to go eat. And so we're making calls to make sure we're comparable. I have a number I don't wanna go over, but we are gonna make it a little easier on our people to, when they take their students to go eat.
What is it now?
It's eleven dollars, like, for our students. And then the per diem, I don't have the per diem in my head, but it's a total of like maybe mid-thirty, thirty-five, thirty-seven dollars for breakfast, lunch, dinner. You know, and I, I would like to get the, the student one, minimum of twelve. And when I say student, I'm talking about athletes. When a coach is feeding seventy kids, we kinda keep it at like that twelve-ish range. And then the per diem, I'd like to push, you know, in the forty-eight-ish range per day and split it up for breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
And it currently, like thirty-six dollars.
Right around in there. Yes, sir. And it's just, it's just not enough in the current environment. And it doesn't affect the budget. It's just within what he's done. And I just wanted to let y'all know that is something that-
I know, we get, we get seventy a day.
We're looking at, right.
On there when we travel.
I just wanted to make sure y'all knew that that was something that we've been looking at, because it's just more expensive to feed kids.
Do students ever have to use money out of their pocket?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We wouldn't. If they do, it's by their own choice. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you say, with them saying that, what about the, the theater kids? Are they included in that too? Okay. I just wanted to make sure, cause I mean, of course, I give it to you.
He's spent, he's sometimes went a little over already. But yes, we, everybody that goes anywhere. Everybody, we don't let, if a kid misses a meal, we, we make sure that they're there.
On our, sorry, on our motion, I know we talked about the buses. Do we have to put in the motion?
No, sir. If we, if we approve the budget, it just kind of then includes-
Even though they're over fifty.
Well, that's what the budget included. Was it?
Well, we would still come to you with that. This is just approving that number. So now we know we can go get busy shopping. But if you wanted to approve the one to be ready.
I mean, wouldn't you think we needed to prove it so that we-
That way, yeah, I think that'd be great. That'd be great. That way, if it does come available, we can, we can jump on it.
Do it.
I think it'd be great. Yeah.
But our line is this budget has the purchase of a two yellow dogs and activity bus.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would like to know, but give them, I would, I would be comfortable. So when it comes available, get your money.
And y'all look at the communication, but that would allow us to go ahead and ask quickly. Perfect. Yes, that'd be great. Okay, sorry, Ron.
Just need to take action on the attached recommended budget, and it's, it's the fourth column. I don't think we have to be that detailed. The three hundred sixty-three thousand dollar deficit.
He, he can make the motion to approve the budget, which also includes-
I would, I would just add it to it. That way it's-
Which includes the purchase of two yellow dogs.
I make the motion, we adopt the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four LISD budget as presented, which includes the purchase of the buses.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, now there being, this meeting is adjourned and the time now is six forty. We'll work in there.
Thanks, guys. I'm gonna check it out.